Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock, so we will call our meeting to order and get underway. Welcome to all of you that are here. If you would stand with me, please, for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, and to the Constitution of this world.
Thank you. You can be seated. Mr. Superintendent, I will just turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning to the board. Nice echo. Good morning. What we have this morning, we really wanted to do a kind of a detailed report on our scoring from the state, how the state scores us. Now, we have two new board members. I know other board members are familiar with that. And then kind of show how we did this year, and then the level of support that we have going on in each of our schools, the detail part. So we're going to do two, there'll be three presenters this morning. Dr. Prince will be presenting remotely, and then Dr. Wild and Latricia Woolard will also be here, and they'll have a piece of, Dr. Wild will share at the very, at the very end, and then that'll complete our piece this morning, and then I believe the chair will have a legislative update and talk about that, as well as some information on your attorney's search. So, Dr. Prince, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Jen, I can hear you.
All right. It's all yours.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, it's all yours.
Okay.
You're on.
All right. So I'm going to share my screen, correct, Terrence? And we should be good to go, right? Okay. Give me one minute.
It's also, everybody has the handout, so if you want to follow, it's in your, in the, your handout.
All right. Terrence, can you give me a confirmation that the workshop?
You're good to go.
Okay. All right. So I just want to, first of all, you know, good morning to our board members. Good morning to Superintendent Chairwoman Holly. We're going to go ahead and give kind of a recap of kind of where we've been over the last few years prior to COVID, and then take a look at our results with regards to the learning loss that occurred with our students. And just to give some perspective, we do have some new board members, some of the things that our previous board members may have seen before, but I've tried to put some fresh, fresh perspective on it. The first thing I want to start out is our agenda for today, and just an explanation about how schools in the district are graded by the state. Now, for the 2020-2021 school year, the district and the schools did not receive a grade by the state. However, we did get our results, and I'm going to kind of share with you how we did as a district, and some of the challenges that we're faced with COVID, with learning loss, and trying to get our students up to speed. We're going to look at past and present results for the FSA, our 2021 FSA results, and then look at school supports and interventions, and then individual student supports and interventions. So the first thing I want to share is kind of between 2015 and 2019, we had some of the largest gains in the state with regards to the performance of our students. Our district grade in 2015 was a C. We improved it to a B, and then we improved over the cells, 96 points. And I'm going to do a deep dive, especially to show our new board members, how schools and districts are graded, but how that translates with regards to how the state measures it. So this is from 2015 to 2019. This is prior to COVID, and there are 11 cells that the state uses to measure a district's performance. So over the past 25 years, the districts have been graded. St. Lucie County has earned 13 Cs and 12 Bs. And I just wanted to show you, and keep your eyes on the plus 96, that's the 96 points of improvement that we had between 2015 and 2019. In over an 1,100-point system, you need 677 points, that's on the far right in yellow, in order to earn an A rating. And we were literally just eight points away from that. That's less than 1%. And we'd gotten so close, in the year that COVID hit in 2020, we really felt we were going to earn that first A. So these are the things that are tested for a school and state grade, and its achievement, and these are proficient students. They test English, math, science, and social studies. The state measures learning gains. The state also wants to measure the learning gains of the lowest 25% of the students on your campuses, and these are really low-level learners, and I'm going to explain that in just a minute. Middle school acceleration, graduation rate, and then college and career acceleration. Each of those cells is worth 100 points. So the test that our students take is ELA, the Florida Standards Assessment, and they take that grades 3 through 10. Our math students take grades 3 through 8, the FSA. Our math students also take algebra and geometry. And then science, they take in 5th and 8th grades, and our high school students take biology. And then social studies, our students are tested in civics and U.S. history. So the first thing I want to talk about is just explaining to you what proficiency means. And those, the 53, 52, 58, and 71 in red is our proficiency, percentage of students that are proficient in our district, and that's measured by levels of learning. So what do the levels mean? So when they look at proficiency, they're looking at the percentage of your students that are levels 3, 4, and 5. And to oversimplify things, if you're a level 3 student, the state considers you to be on grade level. Level 4, you're a little above grade level, and level 5, you're significantly above grade level. And I'm oversimplifying this process, but that's kind of the way the state looks at it. If you're a level 2 learner, that means you're a little bit behind your grade level. And then if you're a level 1 learner, you are significantly behind your grade level. So the state also measures learning gains. And once again, to try to, you know, explain this, they look at all of your learners' levels 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and the state expects a certain measure of growth. So if you're a proficient student in levels 3, 4, or 5, the state expects you to get kind of a year's growth in a year's time. So if you're a 7th grade student, and you take that test, when you get to 8th grade, they expect you to gain a year's growth in a year's time and be on an 8th grade level. However, students in level 1 and 2, those are your students in the bottom 25. The state measures them in a different way, and I want to explain the challenges that some of our schools have that have a lot of level 1 students, that they need a lot of individual support from the district. This chart illustrates, if you're a level 1 student, you can't grow a year's growth in a year's time and expect to ever get to grade level. If you're a level 1 student, the state expects you to actually grow more than if you're a level 3, 4, or 5 student, because if you're, let's say, a grade 3 student on a kindergarten reading level, they want you to be proficient by the time you're in 7th grade. So this illustrates basically a 3rd grade student that's performing significantly below grade level over four years. That student literally has to grow significantly more over four years in order to be finally on grade level by the time they reach 7th grade. The state also looks at your graduation rate, and that's the four-year graduation cohort. And once again, they're looking at students graduating in four years. I will say that students that don't graduate in four years, we graduate almost all students in St. Lucie County public schools. We continue to provide support to those students, even if they're 5th and 6th-year seniors, especially at schools like Performance-Based and Acceleration Academy. We've got our most recent graduation data. We're estimating that our graduation rate for the 2021 school year will be 94%, a 1% improvement from last year. And as you can see, from 2013, when our graduation rate was 68%, our graduation classes are usually about 3,000 students. So you're looking back in 2013, 1,000 students didn't graduate in four years. And now that number is significantly reduced, and we're doing a great job with our high schools. I'd also like to share, this is a great story for St. Lucie County public schools. This information will not go public probably until December or January, whenever the state releases graduation rates. But our graduation rates for our comprehensive high school continue to, you know, dominate the treasure coast with, if you average those up, our graduation rate for our comprehensive high schools has improved from 98.3% in 1920 to 98.6% in 2021. Just a fantastic story and a real reflection of the hard work that our high school teachers and administrators and coaches do with those students to get them graduate, graduated. I want to move on to acceleration and what that means. Acceleration is success. The state also looks at that, and what they're looking at is high school students that pass a college credit test, okay? That's very, very rigorous, AP, IB, ACE, which is our Cambridge exams. They have to earn a C or veteran dual enrollment, or they have to earn a CAPE industry certification, which is a workforce development industry certification. And once again, our school district was at 77% in 2021, even with all the challenges faced with COVID and quarantines last year. We were at 95%, or not 95%, my apologies, 75%, which was a 2% dip. But that would still put us in probably the top 10 in the state for performance in college and career acceleration. So once again, a tribute to our high schools for getting those kind of results. Middle school acceleration. So just a quick definition, and I know I'm moving quickly, but I just don't want to take too long on this, is the percentage of our students that are taking an algebra or geometry course, and they also pass the exam. So this is not the percentage of kids that are, you know, just taking a class. It's very rigorous. They actually have to pass the exam. And we did see a pretty significant reduction in the percentage of students that passed those exams between 19 and 21, with 68%. And I just want to, you know, inform the board that where we saw the largest learning loss was in math, and I'll share with you some other learning loss, particularly in math, that was very, very significant. So, once again, prior to COVID, from 2015 to 2019, we had success in every one of our cells. We were just within 1% of being an A-rated district. Fantastic performance. And this is what it looked like back in 1819. We earned 669 points. Now, what I'm going to share is a projection of what our grade would be if our, if the district would have been graded by the state for 2021. We've gone from 669 points in 1819 to 600 points in 2020-2021, which was a loss of 69 points, but still, we are still significantly above where we were back in 2015 when Mr. Jen arrived. You can see a drop in 69 overall points. Once again, I want to remind the board that the district, North schools are graded this year, but this is just to share with the board what our projection would have been. So, we know that we had substantial learning loss in 2021, but I just wanted to share with you a little bit closer look and kind of compare how we did to the state, which is really reflected in your executive summary that you received after we got the results. And this is taken literally from the executive summary. So this is grades 3 through 10, ELA, and I just want to share with you this one box here. You can see St. Lucie Public Schools dropped 3% from 2019 to 2021 in 3rd grade proficiency. This is levels 3, 4, and 5. But you can also see where the state dropped 4%. So our learning loss was not as significant as the state's was in that particular area. So what I did is I just went through and showed real quick for elementary school, we had a more significant learning loss in 4th grade than the state. In 5th grade, we had a less significant learning loss. And then middle school, 2 out of the 3 areas, we had a more significant learning loss in the state, and this is ELA, English Language Arts. And then high school, we actually had a more significant learning loss in 9th and 10th grade than the state. Now, math, you know, I'm not animating anything, but you can see in math, although our learning loss was less significant than the state for St. Lucie Public Schools, in fact, across the board, our learning loss was less significant, it still is significant when you look at the numbers. For grade 3, an 11% drop; in grade 5, a 5% drop; in grade 6, a 10% drop; and in grades 6, a 6% drop; and grade 8, a 7% drop. Those are still very significant numbers, and we saw that math especially, kids really need to be in school in front of a teacher. And we go into algebra. Algebra, our drop was not as significant as the state, but in geometry, it was very significant at 22%. And once again, I'm just sharing with the board that, you know, math was an area that across the state and in St. Lucie Public Schools, you had large declines. And then science, you know, once again, between 5th and 8th grade, ours was less significant than the state in 5th and more in the 8th. And then biology, we had a more significant learning loss. And then in civics, we were about dead even, but U.S. history, we had a more significant learning loss. So if I were to calculate and kind of, you know, create a scorecard here, St. Lucie Public Schools versus the state with regards to learning loss, we had 11 areas that we were greater or equal to the state, actually less of a learning loss in the state, kind of invert that. And then SLPS had 10 areas where we had more of a learning loss than the state. So the biggest takeaways, the learning loss in our individual schools was greatest in the schools with the greatest economic challenges. And that's something to be expected, but we saw schools where we have the highest poverty rates, we saw the biggest learning loss. We also saw some of the biggest learning loss in schools that saw the most mobility, and I'm going to explain what that means in just a minute. You know, students learn best when they're in school learning from a live teacher. Students from start to finish that started a school and ended a school year with few disruptions, those students tended to do well. And once again, we're going to have to redouble our efforts to provide support to schools impacted the most. We did a lot over the summer to try to target students that demonstrated a lot of learning loss, and we will continue to redouble those efforts to provide that support to our kids. So I did want to share mobility versus stability, because this is an important factor to consider, and just understanding what these things mean in our schools. So the mobility rate, let me just explain to you that is basically kids that start at a school end at the same school. They don't move from school to school to school. And stability rate is basically students that do start and finish at the same school. So stability, high-stability schools tend to perform better than high-mobility schools. So I've shared with you on this screen the four highest stability rates, which means Lincoln Park Academy, Palm Point, Fairlawn, and FK Suite all have one thing in common: they're all magnet schools. Kids have to apply to get in. Once they're in, they stay. So they're very stable, and those schools tend to have some built-in advantages, because the kids that start there finish there. They're very, very stable. But if you look at the high-mobility rate schools, if you look at Lakewood Park and C.A. Moore, basically, if I invert this, only 60% of those students that start at Lakewood Park finish at Lakewood Park. So at that particular school, you've got kids coming and going, you know, throughout the year, and it creates a lot of instability and disruptions. And we've especially tried to provide support to those schools that have high-mobility rates. I also want to add that this is very important to have kind of centralized processes and curriculums, because when you've got kids going from school to school to school, they need to have kind of the same curriculum materials, the same pacing, so that kids, at least, when they go from C.A. Moore to Lakewood Park, the teachers are kind of in the same place in the content, and they're moving at about the same pace, so kids have as few disruptions in learning as possible. And I just, I'm not going to read this to you, but the bottom line is, mobility, high mobility is associated with lower student achievement. So we really need to provide support to those schools with high-mobility rates. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Woolard. I know many of the board members, they do keep touch, keep in touch with our executive directors of our schools. These are our school supervisors, and they provide a high level of support to our schools. And before I move on, I don't know if the superintendent, if you want me to take any questions, or go jump into what the school supervisors do.
Any questions? Board members?
Are we going to have a presentation?
Yeah. We can, why don't we go ahead and finish our presentation, and we can jot your questions down, and we'll just, we'll answer them all that, because some could be answered before we're finished.
Okay.
So you got it?
Good morning, Madam Chair, school board members, and Superintendent Jen. It is an honor to present to you on behalf of the executive directors. Thank you, Dr. Prince, for giving us this opportunity. As a team, my colleagues and I, Dan Frank and Adrian Ocampo, prepared this presentation for you to highlight the predominant areas in which we support schools. As you can surmise from the slide, we serve and support the 36 comprehensive campuses, 12 schools respectively. We wanted to first take a look at how we serve and support schools at the district level. There are many bullets listed here, but at this time, I just would like to emphasize a few key points that magnify our service to schools. First, we work and coordinate and evaluate programs developed by the district for ease of implementation by schools. We attend weekly superintendent meetings as liaisons between the district and schools. We sit on weekly placement review committee meetings, and attend biweekly Office of Teaching and Learning meetings, just to name a few. If we take a closer look at the ways in which we serve and support the principals, administrative staff, teachers, and students at schools, the bulk of our heavy lifting is in supervising and monitoring the school's instructional and managerial day-to-day operations. We conduct frequent scheduled and unscheduled site visits, where we participate in collaborative learning and planning meetings and provide feedback. Classroom walkthroughs, where we provide feedback and develop corrective action plans when needed. We attend data meetings, where we review various data points, such as unit assessments, IREDDI, LLI, and Achieve 3000, just to name a few. However, we spend an extensive amount of time analyzing and synthesizing all data points collected, both quantitatively and qualitatively, during our focused monthly This slide shows an at-a-glance view of the topics discussed during these monthly meetings. Principals receive and review the agenda items prior to their scheduled meetings. Here, we have an example of evidence collected between the executive director and the principals based on a focus for the monthly agenda. During these meetings, we are able to make informed decisions on the deployment and mobilization of district resources and support, such as teaching and learning support, curriculum support, and ESC or ESOL support when needed. The beauty of these meetings is that we provide consistent two-way communication between the executive director and the schools. An important service to the building level administrator is to make the collection of evidence and documentation easy to measure and monitor. For instance, if you take a look at the top 2 boxes at the left and the right of the slide, each school either has a team site or a team's channel that allows for the principal or the executive director to upload important information or important documentation, and our supervisors also have access to these sites. This extension creates a consistent two-way communication that enables the monitoring of evidence and documentation even when we are not on campus. Lastly, in support of schools, we aid parents with concerns about their child's education through our prompt response via phone calls, texts, or emails. In closing, through the years, Superintendent Jen has shared different quotes by various authors. One author once said, "Leadership is not a rank or position to be attained, but a service to be given." Thank you for allowing us to support and serve the students and families of St. Lucie County.
Am I back to sharing my screen?
Yes, sir.
I'll share once again. Give me one second. I think Latricia and Dan and Adrian, I think they're there this morning, they really do a wonderful job. The great thing about the work that we do is we meet every Wednesday, and I meet with the executive directors, and we go through specific items with regards to how can we support our schools. And I'm glad that Latricia showed the evidence that we asked for, because I always tell the executive directors, you know, "Don't tell me, show me." I want to see what's happening in the schools to make sure things are getting done. And not just that, Mr. Jen always talks about functioning with a sense of urgency. I've worked in some very large districts in Palm Beach County and Orange County, and it seems to take forever, especially working in the DNF schools that I worked in, to get any kind of district support. We move rapidly and immediately to provide support to our schools in real time after those Wednesday meetings. I wanted to share also, real quick, school renewal, especially with our new board members. And Dr. Michelle Harrington has taken on that role this year, and Dr. Harrington did a marvelous job of pulling St. Lucie Elementary out of DA status, which is a state oversight. And she works with a small team of five specialists, and these are expert teachers with track records of results. And they provide support primarily in two areas, and I'm not going to read this slide for you, but they really work through our collaborative planning meetings, and, you know, working with teachers on the planning side, and then they also model instruction for the teachers on what those plans need to look like in those classrooms. And it really builds capacity with our teachers in kind of a gradual release model, that her teams work with teachers at a number of our schools. And it's interesting, because the schools that she's working in right now are some of our schools with the highest mobility rates, which is, you know, the students coming and going, and entering and then withdrawing. But these schools are primarily in our green zone schools. These are schools that, when Mr. Jen arrived, many of these schools were D or F schools, that almost all of them are no longer in that status. And actually, Lawnwood, although the schools were not graded, Lawnwood was one of the very few schools that actually saw improvements last year with all of our COVID challenges, and they came off the state list of oversight, and we only have one school remaining. But these are the schools that she supports. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over, because now we're going to get into the specific supports that we provide to children in our schools, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Wild.
Good morning, everyone. Happy to be here this morning and continue this presentation. I'm going to talk first about some terminology. You might hear people talking about MTSS, so I want to explain what that is to everybody. That is a multi-tiered system of support. That is a multi-tiered system of support. And I'm going to talk first about how that applies to students, because we have tiered support for all of our students. And then it ties right back to the support that we give our schools. So you heard Dr. Prince and Mrs. Woolard talk about the support we provide to our schools. So I'm going to tie that right back to multi-tiered levels of support before we close this out this morning. So let's start there. And I'm going to first start by explaining this pyramid that you see. You're going to see this a lot, this graphic, versions of this graphic are often displayed when we're talking about multi-tiered levels of support for our students. And the reason for that is it perfectly illustrates that our tier one support is for all students. So the widest part of the pyramid, or sometimes a triangle, is to indicate all students. And it is the critical piece, because if we have high-quality tier-one instruction for all students every day, we will have fewer students that need additional support. And then we always want to have high-quality support as we move up that pyramid to support our students and then our schools. The other term you'll hear associated with this is response to intervention. And I'll get a little bit more clear about what that is as I move through this. Multi-tiered system of support is not a class or a special program, although you'll hear it defined in various ways. It is really the way that we organize instruction as a school district across the board. It also is very, very data-rich, so that we're making decisions with the best information possible, and that is from day to day. Key components, I already mentioned. What I consider the most important one is high-quality instruction for all students every day. And then in addition to that, there must be a universal screener. There must be a way to measure what our students know and are able to do, and to get really into the weeds as to what we need to do to help our students. This process of multi-tiered support also applies to behavior. Today, I am focused on the academic component, but we also work very closely with our teachers, with talent development, with student services, with this whole entire process, because it crosses over into the whole child. I mentioned the interventions. They must be evidence-based. They must work, and we must prove that they work. And then there's constant progress monitoring. And this is where I'll go back and explain what response to intervention is. What that means is we don't pick an intervention or a course, like an intensive reading class, put the child in it and do the same thing all year. If that intervention is not working for that student, we need to measure it quickly and pivot and provide additional assistance. And when we get into tier two and tier three, that means we're changing the frequency, the duration of whatever the intervention is. So some examples of tiered support. So when you're out in schools, you'll see them. If you walk into a class and they're doing their core instruction, all students, it can be whole group or small group. That is tier one. If you see a walk-to-intervention group where students have been pulled to work on a specific skill that they need, that would be tier two. And you'll also see that in some intensive classes, some in small group instruction. And then tier three is the smallest group of students that need the most intense interventions. And that also has requirements for who can provide the intervention that we report to the state. And the process is really a school-wide process. So if you look at this screen, it really just gives you a high-level overview, but there's a problem-solving process involved with multi-tiered levels of support. For tier two, which is students who need help in reading, or math, or behavior, whatever the case may be, that is a school-wide problem-solving process. And it can be by grade level or whole school. It can include looking at things like attendance. And you're looking at what interventions are moving your data for those students. But when you get to tier three, it's an individualized process. At this point, you are looking at individual students, and it is sometimes an indication that the student might be moving into testing for exceptional student education. But it is very individualized at that point. We have a plethora of academic intervention programs. Sorry, I clicked that too quickly. LLI, you heard Mrs. Woolard mention LLI. That's our Level Literacy Intervention Program. And a number of years ago, we introduced that program in our schools that work with school renewal, and then our green zone schools. And now we've been fortunate enough to expand it district-wide. We also have a district trainer that provides support to schools on LLI, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. That is an evidence-based reading intervention. We also have a Benchmark Advanced Intervention Kit, which is new this year, because it is part of our new elementary textbook adoption. So we are introducing Benchmark Advanced Intervention Kit. We have Reading Horizons. This is our phonics curriculum. So it is a tier-one curriculum, but it can also be used for intervention when students need it. And then in middle school, we also use Reading Plus. And in high school, we use Achieve 3000. And then I mentioned screening instruments for students. The I Ready Diagnostic is our main K through eight diagnostic screening instrument that is administered three times a year. I know many of you are very familiar with that instrument. I Ready also has growth monitoring. We have the Benchmark Assessment System, which is part of the LLI rollout. And we have Flickers in kindergarten. And then we have EZCBM, which we use with tier-three students. I mentioned I Ready and the growth monitoring. That is administered every six weeks, and it measures how the student is doing throughout the year. The Benchmark Assessment System, and I'll show you a sample of that, is administered four times a year. And that is done by the teacher or the interventionist. And then LLI also includes running records. And those are administered through small-group tiered instruction, and that's part of the monitoring of LLI. Both of those two are assessments that provide the teacher with individualized data for the child on how they're progressing in their reading. But also, once a teacher becomes proficient in administering and analyzing that data, that also in turn helps them become a better reading teacher. So it's a wonderful system overall. And then I mentioned that EZCBM is for tier-three students. And that is administered every 10 days for fluency and every 20 days for comprehension. But that is for the smallest group of students needing the most intense intervention. I have repeatedly mentioned the importance of tier-one quality instruction for all. We are one of not too many districts that has a really comprehensive monitoring system for our tier-one instruction as well. And that is because we have locally developed unit assessments at the end of every unit in grades two through 11 to help the teachers know how they're doing in tier one and really to inform us. When Dr. Prince talked about our meetings, Office of Teaching and Learning meetings with the executive directors, we are looking at that data at the school, at the district level, teacher level, and then teachers use it right down to the student level. And in addition, we are able to then analyze the results by standard, by topics, and we're able to really get in and provide support where it is needed. And this, this is not intended to really dig in to show you what we get out of I Ready, but I did want you to see how data-rich we are in this regard. And so you can see, these are graphics that we look at at the district level. And we actually meet with the I Ready experts as well. And as they evolve and add new components to I Ready, we are right on top of it, so we get the very best information. What's really important here is at the teacher level, because the teacher can see this data and see exactly how their students are doing in each of the domains. They can see if their students are doing well, or individual students are doing well on phonics, on high-frequency words, on comprehension. And then the program actually gives the teacher information to know what to do about it, gives them instructional plans, tells them who to group together. So it's very informative for our, our elementary teachers. In, in this slide, you can see how it, those are student initials, and it would tell the teacher exactly how they can group the students for their small-group instruction or intervention. And I mentioned that the program itself will give the teachers tips on exactly what to do in each of the domains for instruction. Very, very helpful, especially if a teacher is new or still developing in a certain area. And these are additional detailed reports that the teacher gets that are at the student level. So this can be useful also in a parent conference to really outline specifically where that child is. In LLI, this running record is, it's really like a tally system to see how the student is doing. You do it while you're listening to a child read, and it is part of the LLI, or Level Literacy Intervention Progress Monitoring System. And so is the BASS. So you can see here that the teacher's actually taking notes, or the interventionist, about what the child is doing in their reading. And they also keep a class record form, so they can see where their students are. In middle school, in high school, they, each of these programs have very similar reports. I opted not to keep including them, because they're hard to read in detail. But each of these programs provide the teacher with the same type of data that we can look at at the district level, at the school teacher level, and at the student level. I've already mentioned that MTSS, that whole process involves many, many people. And just pulled some of the key people on those problem-solving teams. Critical to that process is the classroom teacher. They provide all the tier-one instruction, and then sometimes additional tier-two and tier-three instruction. The counselor plays a very pivotal role in the process, providing additional services, also usually facilitating the meetings. The school psychologist and the ESE specialist out of Bill Tomlinson's shop, student services and ESE, key roles in this as well. And then two additional roles at the school site. The one on the right with the green heading is the interventionist. And the interventionist is a classroom-certified teacher who goes into the class and provides tier-two or tier-three support. So that is in addition. The teacher can do it as well. But an additional interventionist also goes in and helps to track the data, provide that instruction. And in the case of tier-three reading intervention, they must be reading-certified or endorsed. So we are really working hard as a district to increase our number of people that hold that endorsement. And we've really done a great job. And as you are already aware, this year, we added an interventionist to every single school. And then an instructional coach. An instructional coach's main focus is on tier-one instruction. It's on helping the teachers become stronger at their craft and make sure that all students get quality instruction every day. And those folks are involved in an entire cycle of observing instruction, coaching teachers on what they see, helping them to plan their lessons. You've heard everybody mention CLPs, or Collaborative Learning and Planning. That is the weekly, multiple times a week, meeting that our teachers have together, where they plan their lessons, their delivery, where they talk about whether their students are learning, what they're teaching, and whether or not they need interventions. They look very closely at the data, and then they come back and reflect on what they taught. And the coach helps to guide that process, as well as our administrators themselves, who are very skilled in this as well. Along with those interventions, we often come and talk to you about the additional supports we put in place for our students. So as you know, we have greatly expanded our summer school opportunities, our summer camps, our credit recovery, our extended school year. We also, last year, did a lot with after-school tutoring. We have our 21st Century Grants. We did our Gears Tutoring. I'm going to pivot for just a minute and talk about quarantine right now. Because we are, you know, as we've already discussed with you in previous meetings, we are concerned about the impact of COVID in the last year and a half on our students. And we've been working hard to catch all of our students up. And now, as we go into this year, everybody is back in face-to-face instruction, and we are experiencing students that have to quarantine. So we have processes in place already for providing instruction when students are absent, but we are really kicking that up this year. Very special attention on this. So I want to talk for a second about what we're doing here. When a student is quarantined, they are immediately issued a laptop. So, you know, those processes were firmly in place last year with Terrence O'Leary's shop. And our principals are very adept at doing that now, so we very quickly issue that child a laptop. And they have access to all of the curriculum resources and their teacher assignments through Canvas. So Canvas is our learning management system where all of our textbooks are stored, where the teacher then does daily assignments with directions to the teachers. And at some point, we could, we could show you what that looks like in more detail, because teachers can, they also have lessons they have access to that the curriculum department has developed for them. And they include video lessons, where there's little short segments of somebody presenting the lesson, or virtual experiences for students to see what something looks like, labs and so forth. So those lessons are all there for the children. But what we are adding right now, we just met with our principals, and we're in the process of identifying these folks, so we can start next week. We are adding at every school site teachers who will provide quarantine support. We're calling them quarantine support teachers. They are our classroom teachers who are certified, who will work extra hours either before or after school, or both, depending on the school hours, to supplement the classroom teachers' efforts. So they will be providing additional support, and I'll outline that for you. These teachers will first and foremost make sure that the student has that laptop and knows how to access Canvas. If they're new to us this year, they're going to walk them through how to do it. They're going to answer any of their questions, them and their parents. They're also going to provide academic assistance, tutoring, individual, small-group instruction through Teams. So Teams is different than Canvas. They will use Teams to meet with those students during their quarantine to provide instruction. They will also act as a liaison between the classroom teachers and the ESE student support specialist to make sure that if that student gets accommodations or needs anything additional in Canvas, that that will be provided. And they'll also, we've provided them, Bill's department has already provided the schools with referral services and resources, so that if a family is in need of additional services, that teacher can answer those questions and provide referral information for that family. What we're looking to do is make it easier on the family and give them a contact who is also that academic support. So the, the teachers will, after-school hours, work on those initial contacts, work on the tutoring and academic support, and planning with any school personnel that they need to meet with. And this slide just outlines what I was just getting a little bit deeper into and how they will do it. What we are telling the principals is to work to select your very best teachers. And these teachers will change their schedule as their situation changes. So if more students are added to the quarantine list, they will adjust their schedule and move forward. And if additional teachers are needed, if there's additional students at a school on any given day quarantined, we have backup teachers ready to go. They will be trained as well and, and ready to fill the role of quarantine support. Also, for this year, I mentioned the tutoring we did last year. We are allocating additional funds. This is in addition to the school-based Title I funds. All of our schools have Title I dollars. We are adding additional allocations to provide tutoring throughout this school year. And they can use it for those students that are below grade level, that became below grade level as a result of COVID, or that need short-term tutoring after a quarantine. If a student comes back and they are still lost on some key component they missed, they can go in tutoring for short-term. And then we'll continue our compensatory services, and this is just for ESE students who may have missed some of their IEP-driven services during a quarantine, or last year during the pandemic. That will continue. And now I'm going to switch and tie it back to that multi-tiered system of support for our schools. It's exactly what I talked about with our students when we provide standardized, quality support to all students, and then we ratchet it up as students need it. We do the same thing with our schools. And we already talked about the executive director's support. We work very closely with them. And school renewal. And in addition, we provide differentiated support through the Office of Teaching and Learning, primarily from the departments you see listed here. Learning, primarily from the departments you see listed here. The curriculum department focuses on Tier One instruction, because they are the ones who select and approve curriculum. They are the ones that develop lessons and resources for the teachers, and now, those are provided to schools through Canvas. They also develop the unit assessments and continue to revise those, they look at how each question performs and, and provide revisions. And then they provide professional development in content, in curriculum, and how to use all of our resources, and how to use those assessments. They do go out to schools and support collaborative learning and planning, and they provide support on the instructional technology. I'm gonna talk about talent development for a minute, and then I'll talk about how those are tiered. Talent development, that first group, those curriculum folks, those are content experts in all of our core areas, and now in some of our additional areas, like health, mental health. We also have talent development, and they focus primarily on pedagogy, on instructional technology, and on new teacher support. We have a two-year, state-approved, new teacher support program, and they oversee that program as well. Also, that department works on leadership development and supporting our aspiring leaders, our assistant principals and our principals, so that they understand our instructional framework, as well as all of this content that we've been talking about this morning. They support collaborative learning and planning, and they also provide district-wide professional development. How this becomes multi-tiered is both of these groups also provide Tier Two. So when we utilize that data and we meet with the executive directors, if we see administrators, or schools, or grade levels, or teachers who need additional support, that's when we mobilize and we go out. And some of you know, we've done that, some years, we've gone out and done that across the district in third grade, or just at certain schools, fifth grade, just depends on what the data tells us from month to month. So those departments are very fluid, and they go out and they provide Tier Two support. When we get to Tier Three support, those are schools in turnaround, and that would be school renewal with the support of curriculum and talent development. So we really do have a true tiered level of support for our schools and for our teachers. We have other departments that do that as well, we support our counselors in that same way. Alternative education does it, and many of you are very familiar with that department, because they work with students that are in DJJ programs, or who get in trouble and need to come back, or who are academically behind. They provide transition services for those students and so forth. Federal programs that monitors our Title One and our grants, they also work with schools and collaborate with all of these departments, cross-departmental collaboration to make sure that we are reviewing our interventions, do they work, and really looking at return on investment. And we also have tiered staffing, if you will, because we do have a staffing formula, we do our staffing allocations across the district using formulas. And then, when there are schools with additional needs, they have additional staffing that we've allocated through various funding sources, and we're always looking for more funding sources to do this. So I've listed some examples of this additional staffing. So you can see CA More, above and beyond their normal staffing, they have 21 positions that provide additional support. They have the interventionist, they have an additional assistant principal, they have a teacher on special assignment, they have an instructional coach, a family engagement officer. I won't read all those to you, but you can see the funding sources and the additional positions. At St. Lucy Elementary, you can see the same. Both of those schools have master teachers. Those are classroom teachers who get part-time release to provide additional training, so it's, it's in addition to the instructional coats, it's in addition to school renewal. It's also a recruitment tool, because those are 11-month employees with a higher salary, so it serves multiple purposes. And then you can see the additional positions that are provided at some of our other schools that are not necessarily in Tier Three in terms of state turnaround, although Lawnwood was, and they've come out, but they are in high-level Tier Two. So you can see all those positions. And that continues. And then at each school site, depending on their Title One budgets and other funding sources, there are additional positions based on need at different schools as well. So that's an overview of multi-tiered levels of support, and how we all work together as a district to support our students and our schools. Mr. Jent?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Wild. I want to thank Dr. Prince, want to thank Latricia as well, and we will open it up now. I know it was a lot of information, but it was, we could have done this in a three-hour format, but we try to do the Reader's Digest condensed version, but would like to open it up to any questions that the board members would have, and, Madam Chair.
Dr. Wild, can you tell us more about the new teacher support, two-year mentoring program?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, we have a team of people in the Talent Development Office, and they are all accomplished teachers, that work with our Director of Talent Development and our Coordinator, so that's Denise Rodriguez and DeeDee Campbell. And we provide mentoring to our new teachers, and those are school-based mentors that are trained by the district Talent Development Office, to help be there and answer questions and support. But we also send our district-level teachers out to check in on those teachers, meet with those teachers, and help them with anything they may need. So sometimes it's about classroom management, so we teach them the CHAMP's program and work with them. We might be teaching them the multi-tiered system of support. It's really individualized to anything they need, including content knowledge, if they need content knowledge. We provide support for them to pass their tests that they need to become fully certified, we work on that. We also have to get our program approved at the state level, and ours is approved. And we provide now our own clinical education training as well to our mentors, and all of that has to be tracked and documented and sent to the state. It is a compliance reporting requirement as well, so that department takes care of all of that. It too is tiered, because we spend some, we spend more time with some teachers than others, based on need, based on what the school administrator or mentor is telling us they need.
And this program just started this year?
No. This program has been in effect for many, many years. It expanded to two years. It used to be a one-year program, it expanded to two years. We continue to refine it and grow, and we just recently became certified to do our own clinical education. That used to be handled by the college, and now we do our own. So that was just recently submitted by Talent Development and approved, so it continues to expand. We're always looking for improvement and refinement. We collect feedback from our new teachers at the end of their program, throughout their program, to refine it.
So I've recently had a teacher who says she didn't have the support she needed, a new teacher. Who do we recommend teachers to if they say they're not getting what this program is supposed to give them?
Yes, excellent. Denise Rodriguez would be the first person, or myself. Thank you.
Their principal would want to be in the loop, so the first place would be to the principal, and then we make sure we get them the support that they would need, because the source of support's available for them.
Exactly. And that's for new teachers to the profession, but we also offer it to new to the district, so we're available for anybody who needs that type of support.
Just a question for Dr. Wild, from the board members. SLPS, when do they actually meet? I mean, because teachers have a long teaching day, so could you just let us know what, you know, I know the answer to this, but...
Yes, yes, you're talking collaborative learning and planning, CLPs? Yes, so they meet, actually, they have an official planning time. Every teacher has an official planning time that must be at least 45 minutes every single day. They meet one of those a week, bare minimum, everybody meets one time a week in that time. However, they also have additional time carved out of their day. Our principals have done an amazing job with scheduling to also free up their time before school, or after school, or during the day, it depends on the school level, on how they've accomplished that. So in most of our school, all of our schools, they have this additional time. And depending on whether it's elementary, teaching multiple subjects, or secondary, teaching specific subjects, they meet an additional two, three, four times a week to go over the data and refine their lessons. So it varies on different weeks, but it's from one to six times a week that they meet for collaborative learning and planning. Did I answer your question, Mr. Ingersoll? Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question, Dr. Wild. In terms of the master teachers, could you go over what, exactly what is a master teacher again?
Yes, thank you. About four years ago now, we were given a grant from the state to come up with a new concept to try to help schools in turnaround recruit teachers and support teachers. And so we designed the master teacher program, which was to take classroom teachers, high-quality, proven classroom teachers with student performance results, so they have a history of performing, and in each grade level, provide those schools with a classroom teacher who still has an impact directly on students. When we, when we do an instructional coach, they are working only with adults, so what we were looking for is to be able to have the value of that fantastic teacher working directly with the children, but also teaching the adults around them. So we added an additional position through the grant to be able to free up time during the instructional day, so that that teacher can then go model for other teachers, coach other teachers. So it's really a cross between a classroom teacher, a department chair, and an instructional coach, sort of doing all three of those things, part of their day instructing students, part of their day helping to increase the proficiency of their colleagues, only in their grade level. So they're not trying to become an expert in K through five, they are focused on only third grade or only fourth grade. We did it K through five in those schools. It was a recruitment initiative as well, because those teachers, when they go to those schools, they do get a bonus for their VAM, for their student performance data, but this gave them a little bit more than that. It gave them a leadership role, so it's great for somebody who's an aspiring administrator, but isn't ready to leave the classroom yet. It gave them additional training and an additional month. So they are 11-month employees, which increases their salary, but also gives them that additional month during the summer to help plan professional development for the school, to help the principal plan whatever initiative they have for the following year, implement new materials, new standards, and so forth. So it is a unique role to our turnaround schools that we designed out of a grant opportunity.
Something that continues, that is always ongoing?
We have, that's an excellent question, because when we write a grant like that, we have to talk about the sustainability of it. And in, with something like this, you need to and want to sustain it if you, if you show that it works, if, if you find that it's an effective strategy, and also if the school still needs it. So it's that, you know, constant evaluation of whether it is still needed. So yes, as that, that grant has continued, it has reduced over time, but we've been able to not only maintain, we've increased the number of those master teachers at those schools, because the principals determined that they needed them and, and they were working. So now it's a combination of funding sources, so we still have that original grant, and now we supplement it with Title One and other funding sources. And that's how you sustain it. So yes, they have continued even though that grant is declining and will end soon.
Okay, and in terms of the iReady for the Green Zone, it seems to me that, well, my concern is that it starts, we have to work with the lower, like elementary school, and because it sets the, the stepping stone for the others, for the other grade levels. So the iReady, the Green Zone, how effective is the iReady program in the Green Zone, is really what I'm saying, because the kids are still not up to par.
Yes, excellent question, and I agree 100%. The, the foundational skills in the primary grades are so, so critical. We do use iReady, starting in kindergarten, partway through the year. We don't do it initially, we don't do that initial diagnostic, because the students aren't ready for it. But what you're seeing in the results, they align with what we see on the test scores as well. So iReady is effective with those students. It is giving the teachers the data they need to know specifically what those kids need. And you would expect it to show more students needing Tier Two and Tier Three in those schools. When you have students that don't necessarily have homes that are rich with books and print materials, we know that those students are gonna start further behind, so we need that data there more than anywhere, and those tools do help the teachers. That also means they need to be very strong in their Core One instruction and then know those interventions. And that is why we started the Level Literacy Intervention at those schools. The Green Zone is absolutely the schools that have had LLI for a number of years now in K through five. So it is essential that they have those programs there. It is also essential that we continue to work with our community partners to try to improve the print material that those students have access to before they start school. We just met yesterday with Children's Services Council and United Way to continue to work on that community-wide issue, if you will. So yes, I, we recognize that the data does show a greater need there, and that is why we have to respond to that need in the way we illustrated.
So the iReady just gives data, just tells you where the need is, pretty much?
It does, it's a diagnostic program for the data, it also is an additional curriculum as well. So we have our Core Curriculum with Benchmark, and then iReady is Additional Curriculum, and it has both teacher, teacher-driven instructional components, that one slide where I showed you where it told the teacher what to do. The teacher does that component, that's the instruction the teacher does, and they can do it during various times throughout the school day outside of Core. And then there's also the computer-based component, and that's, I think, the part that most people think of, because they know the children log on to iReady, and they have an individualized path of instruction on iReady. That's a different component of iReady. So that's a big program, it's diagnostic and curriculum.
Okay, in terms of the laptop that we send home if the kids are in quarantine, there was an issue last year with Wi-Fi, so are they, how, are we, do they have a Wi-Fi when you send them home with a laptop?
Did you say there was an issue with Wi-Fi?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Mr. O'Leary to come up and answer that.
Good morning. So there were concerns around students that didn't have Wi-Fi. There were several opportunities through company partners, so Xfinity offered a no-cost Wi-Fi for our parents, and we broadcasted that information out. In addition to that, we did receive several funds, one fund coming from the city of Port St. Lucie for hotspots. And again, this year, we've ordered probably about 4,000 devices through the ECF funds, which were coming from the FCC. So we will have the capability to make sure that if a child does get a computer and they're quarantined, that we will provide them at least the hotspot, if not the free opportunities the other broadband providers are allowing students to access.
Just wanted to see, make sure that they, that they have that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know, how long are these students being quarantined for? Two days, three days, one week, 14 days?
If, if they are not, if they're, if they're vaccinated and they're not symptomatic, then they don't, they don't have to be quarantined at all. And then the other, Bill, if you want to yell it out, I don't want to say wrong, it's, five to 10 days, depending upon the circumstance with that individual family or that individual student.
Thank you.
Last year was rough. What was progress monitoring looking like last year? Because we knew we were having issues, so how, how did it look like with kids at home taking it and the validity of that? Because we knew, obviously, we, we were suffering, so how did you know that?
Yes, excellent question. Yes, excellent question. We did analyze the data last year throughout the entire year. We separated it by students that were learning virtually and students that were learning at home. I would say, if I'm going to just give a general overview answer, big-picture answer, it really varied across the board. We, there was not a pattern all the time. Part of that may be due to the fact that virtual progress monitoring is a little bit more difficult, to know that it's completely independent at all times. But we did know and did predict that the students that were learning virtually were struggling. And I see Dr. Prince is on the screen, so he may want to add to that answer, because I know he was very actively monitoring that data as well.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Mr. Ingersoll, to your point, we saw a lot of students that were, especially in our high-poverty areas, students that were really struggling on our diagnostics. And what we tried to do in January is did a full-court press to try to get as many of those children back into brick-and-mortar schools as possible with regards to the safety protocols we had in place. We did get quite a few students back, but it was a, you know, to your question about the validity of the diagnostics, they kind of told us what we expected, that our students were going to dramatically, their performance on the state assessments was going to drop precipitously. And that's exactly what happened.
Following up with that question, knowing the test scores that we have, are student achievement points, will they be greater than next year when it comes to school grading? In other words, you know, we were just given a softball, unfortunately, and I didn't really want to put it that way. But, you know, now, now that we can, we've had them during the summer, we have progress monitoring, and we can put them to where they need to be. So our learning gains should be greater, because even the ones that didn't have great learning grades, the threes and fours will now have a better opportunity or greater opportunity to become fours and fives. You see what I'm saying? So are you expecting greater learning gains?
Make a great point, because the students did perform so poorly, you know, I can, I can look at it optimistically and say, you know, they can, they can only go up. And that is true. But what I also shared, especially with our Level One and Two students, those students have to make a year's growth, more than a year's growth in a year's time, for the state to recognize them for making a learning gain. And we did lose quite a few students, Mr. Ingersoll, out of proficiency that we have to get them back into proficiency. I would hope that with students back in school, in front of teachers, that our performance will be better. But, you know, right now, we're, you know, we do have challenges, which all the districts in the state of Florida have, you know, with kids coming and going due to quarantine. And we're kind of fighting an uphill battle, that we don't have that consistency and continuity that we'd like. But I would hope and anticipate that our students, being back in school, are going to perform better.
I wanted to address the iReady a little bit, but not just the iReady, but the whole presentation, really. The multi-faceted ways that we, as a district, are using to address student achievement is extremely important. And I appreciate the intensity of what we are doing. And I understand that because of that intensity, we have been able to see achievement gains and growth. One of our highlights that we can say now is that we're number one in academic gains in the state of Florida. So that takes a lot of work, and I want to acknowledge that work that's being done. Ms. Jennifer, you mentioned a couple of things, questions, that were very vital to data acts. And I wanted to bring out the iReady. I've used the iReady in our after-school program for five or more years, as long as we've had it, almost, you know. And that component that works with that child to, on their level, wherever they're at, and it does not allow the child to move forward until they master the level that they need to learn, has been very vital and instrumental in working with our children. Parents and others, after-school programs, we have to do very little with the iReady because it works on that child's level. And that child can sit there and work through their iReady subjects without much help, because that, that, the teaching part will go over it again and deal with whatever it has to do. It's like they have their own private tutor in many ways. But what I have learned through my years of working with young people is that they need access to several different areas in order to help them academically, as well as, you mentioned, behavior. So I just wanted to say thank you. I wanted, Ms. Willard, is she here? There she go. Thank you for your presentation, an example of that student needing all different types of level of learning and people helping those students that need help. Ms. Willard has took on a child at our program. We have a virtual one-on-one tutorial program. And last school term, she took on a child that was, that was behind academically. So there is all different ways that we can all, as a, as a community, help in this effort. And, and, and we are, we're doing a tremendous job. I hate to hear that we've gone back in any of our areas, but with COVID, I think we've sustained pretty well dealing with the COVID situation of last school year. The internet access, thank you for asking that question, Ms. Richardson, because the internet access is something that I too have been concerned about. If we take a child and we're virtually going to tutor that child and give that child their own personal tutor, that child needs a laptop, which the principals have already said they will make sure that we provide the laptop. But the internet access, they need that as well. And so, Terrence, thank you for that info, that we know that we can get that child internet access if necessary. This presentation overall has been very enriching for me, and I've been here, what, 12 years now? 10 years, 11 years? Debbie knows. But it brought out a lot of things that will help me as a board member. So thank you for the presentation that was given today.
We're so fortunate to have Mr. Jen as our superintendent, and also our support staff too, our cabinet, Dan, Adrian, Latrice, Dr. Wild. You can go across the state and see how other school organizations run, and it's run from the top down, and it comes as an edict. We've seen that before here in St. Lucie County. We're going to do it this way, and this is the way we're going. But we have people that have ideas, and they bring them to the table, and they work well as a team. And it's important to realize that because they're in touch with the schools. When you see schools that are in need and they're getting 21 extra teachers, you know, and one school, C A Moore, is getting 21, Longwood was getting, you know, 17, one was getting 15 and a half, that's crucial, because they know what's going on in our community, and they know what it takes for that, those children to be successful, with Dr. Harrington and Denise Rodriguez stepping in and giving extra support. So board members, it's very comforting, particularly sitting from this aspect, to see what's going on, because we do have concerns in those areas. Now, we do have concerns in those schools. And when you do hear those concerns, address them to the superintendent, and he'll get them fixed, and he'll talk to his executive directors. But it is very, very reassuring to know that the superintendent and his team understand the needs and are on top of it. And I see Bill Tomlinson back there too, with exceptional students, and knowing what it takes, because we have to move those students too, and what type of therapy goes on in those schools. So, you know, we are very blessed to have the staff that we have that are so in tune to our community. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent and your staff.
Mr. Jen, I'll be quite frank, sir, I thought I was going to have an easy weekend here. But thank you very much for this, the first half of this. No problem at all. I could understand going through the grading and everything. But the second half on the support staff and the interventions, I got to be quite frank with you, sir, I'm going to need some time. I wouldn't even start asking the questions, Mrs. Holley. I'd be here for an hour with you. First thing I need is, I need a sheet like they gave me years ago on the city council with all the acronyms. I have no idea. I'm going to be frank, I just, I don't know how big this support staff is. Troy asked one of the questions, even when they could do all of these things that are in here. I mean, it's quite, I'm sure that it's all programmed and it's the way it's supposed to be, but I just don't understand it, sir. I'm being frank. And to sit up there and have to make decisions and not understand this, I gotta. So I, what I really need is to go through this. I need, do we have a sheet of acronyms for everyone?
We can, we can get information for you, because that's why we did, that's why we did this presentation, knowing that for the two new board members specifically. So we'll, we can have, you know, sessions with you. We can have you meet with staff members to understand it, because it is, it is difficult, and the acronyms drive me nuts as well. We can try to come up with some of those as well for you and answer those questions. And you know that staff's available when we set up time to go through the specific questions that you have.
Even at the top of the sheet, there's acronyms. I don't even know what we're going to talk about. I don't know what IEP is or E S S E R. I don't know.
IEP is.
Thank God we have experienced people here. But I'm just, now, I now know what I don't know. So if it's okay, I'm going to need to.
Absolutely.
I say, I'll be okay if I get the acronyms. That'll answer half my questions, but I'm going to need to spend some time with Dr. Prince and Mrs. Wild a little bit, and I'm sure I'll be fine. I read this, and it looks like we must have a support staff of hundreds of people. And when is it going to be done, like Troy asked? I'm sure there, but I just want, one statement I will make, the, what we heard about the support staff for the quarantine kids, you know, the teaching support staff, that's going to be quite a challenge, because the mobility involved in that is going to be, and the computers, I mean, some kids are quarantined for seven days and some for three weeks, and so that's going to be a heck of a challenge. So hats off to you for that. But thanks again. And again, you gave me a lot of work, Mr. Jen. I say, I know what I don't know now. But I'm sure you're going to get me those acronyms, and I'll get with you guys, you know.
One.
Yeah.
I think we have the J K S S sheet.
Huh?
We have the J K S S sheet.
I know he was going to be trouble even before I got on the, on the, you know.
Madam Chair, if I can just close out and summarize, I do want to make a couple of points. And you're right about the acronyms. I always belong to A Y P. All you other guys. Anyway, but one of the things we did talk about, and the executive directors, they're here today. One reason why your job is probably a lot easier than it is in a lot of other places, because you know when you get that concern from the parent and you send it to me right away, the executive directors are on it. It goes to them immediately. And not, but that's just part of it. The, they're the highest-ranked employees in the state, not in the state, in the district by their, by the principals themselves, which really accentuates the support that the principals, the appreciation of the support that they get at the school centers from them. And they go through all of, and I've been one of those before in another place, and it's just like a jack-of-all-trades, no matter what it is, whether it's something on the bus, whether it's something in the classroom, whether it's academically, the third-grade class needs this, they need that, whatever, they do a remarkable job with that. Michelle Harrington just came on board, and what was important to me about Michelle's position as with them is that they're former principals. And so when Troy talks about the hierarchy, or, you know, I don't want any bureaucracy, I don't want any of that. We want to be able to get support to them immediately. And so the fact that they're principals, they think like principals, they know what principals need, we can never lose. And I think that's why we're so successful in a lot of areas, because we just, they'll tell you that. And the sense of urgency that Dr. Prince talked about, you know, the sense of urgency is so important, because no matter what the complaint or concern is from the parent, they want an answer that day if we can give it to them. If the principal needs additional support in whatever area that is, they need that right away. And so having former principals that are in that, that have lived it, that know the challenges, is one reason why I think we're as effective as we are. You can look around the room, almost half the people in here are former principals. Raphael, we're going to make you a principal second semester, since you're still here. But it does work. We talk about the CLPs, that's Collaborative Learning, Collaborative Learning and Planning. To me, that's one of our most important endeavors that we have. That's really common planning time. And that's where we don't need to teach, send teachers and staff members to a conference in Orlando or Atlanta or someplace else. We have, you know, the expertise is in the classroom, in that meeting where they learn from each other. And they also have the capacity now through teams to talk to the fifth grade at another school, because we want to look at student work, we want to look at the work that we're doing. So if you and I are both third-grade teachers at Morningside, and on the iReady or whatever assessment we give, your kid's knocked it out of the park, and my kid's struggle, I can say, you know, Donna, what did you do for this question or that question? What was your in-strategy? And that's so effective when it's, when the, it's a trust that's in there. And the administrative team or a coach is in there as well. We probably get more value out of that. And the schools that do it with the most fidelity, or the grade levels that do it with the most fidelity, it's, you see it in the scores of the students, no matter whether you're in a COVID year or you're in a normal year. And so that's why, that's been our main push. You were, many of you were there when we came back. We talked about that with our principals, and it's been a point of emphasis over the summer and in training as well. So you can see how comprehensive everything is we do. We have no, we have no silos in the district either. Each department works together, which I'm very proud of. That's the culture that we have. So Terrence can come up, and he knows what's going on. And Raphael can come up, and he knows what's going on. And they're, they're just intrinsically involved in the total picture of really meeting the needs of the kids, no matter what the challenge will be. So I'm very proud of what they've done. And I thought the presentation day was excellent. Like I said, we could have done this for half a day, but we condensed it, and we'll come back for further questions or whatever the board members would need. But I just want to thank the team for that. And Madam Chair, let me see if I missed anybody. I do want to accentuate too the point that Felicia Nixon in her school, Longwood, came off the DA list, even in the COVID year, which was really important. And she has gone in there and done a remarkable job. And she shares her strategies with the other teachers as well, and the other school centers as well, that, you know, they have their networks where they talk to each other about what's going on and what are best practices. When we have our principal meetings, we spend a lot of time on best practices, where they just get together and chat and talk. And it's probably the most, probably the best part of the meeting for them, is that. And I'll stop right there, Madam Chair, and turn the meeting back over to you.
Let me add my thanks as well to everyone. It was an intensive endeavor, but certainly well worth it. It's amazing when you put it all together like that, how much we really do provide for our students, and it's a great source of pride. Before we adjourn, I have a couple of items to go over with you all, board members. You'll find at your desk, there is a District of St. Lucie County 2022 Legislative Priority Sheet, as well as the Greater Florida Consortium, the legislative program that we're going to pursue with that. What, many, many hours have gone into this, talking about what would be effective this year, what might not be effective. And it was really decided to maintain a course of requesting what we've been requesting to help us maintain funding sources and that sort of thing. So this is not an item for vote. I just need a thumbs up from you if you're ready to proceed with it. I have to present to the Florida School Board Association one, and the Consortium the other one. So it's informational purposes, but if you, thumbs up, neutral, or thumbs down to move forward. Yes.
So give a thumbs up or thumbs down until it's been read.
Okay. It, if you can just read it over and tell me thumbs up or thumbs down by Friday of this week. Our deadline is September 1, so on both of them, if you'll just do that. And again, it is not an item for vote. So if you want to discuss it with me, it's, you're certainly able to do so. It's not a sunshine violation on those, so just let me know. Okay?
If I could interject too, because the legislature starts earlier this year, I had to present last week to the delegation, which was, you know, we were in our, literally our, you know, first two weeks of school. And what I highlighted to the delegation, and just for the And, uh, what I highlighted to the delegation and then just for the boards, um, that would know, and under the financial, if you go down to bullet number five, um, continue to fully fund the teacher salary increase allocation, um, I highlighted that one. Uh, that's, that's the dollars that this governor has brought forward for the teachers to try to get to the 47.5. And so I hit that hard. And I also hit the next section, recruitment and retention. Um, Dr. Wilde has presented before regarding the, um, the SWL program with the counselors and the grant with F A U, where we have 70, um, teachers that are going through that and two-thirds of their, their tuition is paid and we paid for all their books. I think 30 are in the schools now, 15 are in the program. Uh, 30 are in the schools as counselors right now, 15 are in the program. And in the second semester, 30 more will start. So it built, we're growing our own. The same thing we wanted to push was for paraprofessionals that would wanna become teachers. They're in the classroom, they're the teacher's age, they're working with them. And we were trying to do what was called a, um, a, um, non-reoccurring member appropriation, uh, which, which would mean that, uh, we're trying to encourage one of our members to take this on, almost whether maybe we're the pilot program to pay for the tuition or whatever we can do similar to what we did for counselors to get more folks to come into the teaching profession, particularly those teachers aged. Those were the two that I hit, uh, the hardest. I didn't talk about any of the other ones because, um, those meetings drag on and I only had five minutes. So I just wanted to share that, uh, share that with the board.
Um, there's, first of all, um, this workshop was about turnaround schools. Am I correct?
It was about everything we do in all of our schools. We highlighted the turnaround schools, the extra support that goes into there. But it was really what we do for the entire school district.
Okay, that, that's, that's fine. So, um, again, this was a lot of information. So, um, at some point, I would like us to maybe revisit this and, you know, when we have our quest, well, questions or my thoughts together because there's a lot of questions that I have that I, I, I need to make sure that I know what I'm saying before I ask these questions. But one of the things that came up was maybe the S E L, social emotional learning. Um, that is a, is a concern of mine, um, with the kids going back to school. You know, all, everything, you know, brick and mortar. So if we could do a workshop maybe on the S E L and how the kids are, uh, you know, doing and the teachers, you know, something, if we could do something on that so that we could get a handle on an atmosphere for that. In addition, you, you could put a running with this, that's fine. Uh, because I think that's important in, for them to be able to, to learn. Before they can learn, I think that they have to, we have to get a little calm, some, some structure, some order for them to start learning, um, successfully. And, um, as far as the, I thought this was for turnaround. So I came with some questions for like, um, C A Moore with their reading because that's another thing that I'm concerned about, their, their reading level, the reading grade and how, you know, what we are doing for, for the, for those children. And also kindergartners, they are coming in, in, I think the green zone and they are not ready for school, they are not ready for kindergarten. How are we addressing that? I mean, you probably know, I don't know, you know? So, um, how are, and how are we getting them ready? Because again, it's the, those building blocks, you know? If they are not ready in kindergarten, then we're just not setting them up for. So I just want, do you wanna answer that or, or we can leave it for another time?
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson. We didn't focus only on turnaround, as Mr. Jen said, but those levels of support that we discussed for students, that is what we do about students with reading problems. So they get the core instruction, they get what they should be getting for their grade level, the standards, and then they get additional intervention time. So if a student is advanced, when we go to walk to intervention, they go get enrichment. The students that are in need of remediation or intervention, they get different curriculum and that, that leveled literacy intervention that I talked about, that is, it might not be a bad idea to sit down with you and explain that program explicitly because it is designed to find out exactly where the student is lacking in terms of their skills. Like why are they not on grade level in reading? Here's why. These assessments tell us what that is and then we give that instruction specifically to them. Uh, you know, of course, if you discover that the student does not respond to the intervention and they don't catch up, that's when we start to look at tier three and maybe even, um, exceptional student education, the E S E acronym. Um, and then that moves over to bill staff and they may end up qualifying for a special program. But our goal is to try to get the student to be successful in the regular classroom using core instruction and these interventions that we talked about. If we're talking about turnaround, um, in schools that are in turnaround, though, at those last few slides that talked about the extra people and you saw, I, the funding source was next to it where I put UNISIG or SIG four. We were not, I was not intending to go into detail as to what those acronyms mean today. That was just to show you there's variety of funding sources. But if you talk fully about turnaround, you need to talk about what those programs do. And you asked specifically about one of them. Master teacher is exclusive to turnaround. That's an example of one. But there are other funding sources that are exclusive to turnaround that do other programs at those schools. And so I'd be happy at any time to sit down and share those with you. And, uh, the school renewal department, those additional five coaches that go in, that is on top of what everybody else gets. That is also for those schools that need that extra support. And those coaches do whatever is needed, whether it's training the teachers or jumping in and doing small group instruction, um, to get students ready for testing and so forth. So there's a variety of things. It's, it, it would take longer than a two-hour workshop. So, you know, maybe we could just meet ongoing and dig into that a little bit deeper.
I would, I would definitely like that because I did see in the schools where you have all the extra help, I did see that list, you know? But at the same time, we, we are still having issues. So that's why I'm saying that we have, so that's what I'm trying to get to the, you know, trying to understand.
Right. And there is a whole bureau at the state level that works with schools in turnaround too. And so we've, we've got a very successful record of working with them to get students off that list, like Mr. Jen was celebrating Longwood, that was great news. Like St. Lucie Elementary came off that list. Um, and so there, there are a lot of processes in place that we can share with you.
I'll get with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so everyone by Friday, if you'd just let me know if you have any thoughts or questions on the legislative platform. And, um, you'll recall that our last board meeting was announced that Mr. Harrell would be retiring. So I have begun getting a couple of options together for us. One being to maintain the platform that we have now with an in-house legal department and a board attorney who is separate. Also looking at an option of merging all of it together so that everything is in-house. So at our September board meeting, I'll bring a couple of options to you all and we'll decide which ones we want to pursue from that. So just to engage your thinking on that and to be ready for, um, that discussion in September. Won't vote on anything but a discussion on the course that we want to proceed with. And our final item for today, Mr. Kelly, I believe you wanted to share some good news in conjunction with the Education Foundation.
As far, you know, we, unfortunately, you know, we're all wearing the mask again and we're back into this like we were a year ago, but we have experience. And, uh, one thing we do know, the, the answer to what's going on right now is to get everybody vaccinated and of course, we're concerned with the kids and we can vaccinate. I think, uh, I think the Pfizer got, uh, approved, uh, 100% yesterday. Anyhow, we can vaccinate 12-year-olds up, we can vaccinate high schools. And, uh, I think, uh, I saw a thing and, uh, it wasn't my idea. You know, you have to steal ideas, good ideas, you just, you borrow them, you know? West Palm Beach had a, uh, about a week or two ago, had a, uh, a big vac, vaccination thing downtown and they gave $25 gift certificates to everybody that came, the first, so many group of people, hundreds and hundreds, I don't know. And, uh, they actually had a, a, a 400% more turnout, four times as many people turn out for that, uh, as they had planned and they had just enough for that day. I think it was somewhere in that. I think, I think you know about it, Mr. Jen. I think you had talked to me about it. So we came up, make a quick incentive to get these, these children vaccinated in high school because we can, uh, is it, uh, get some money and had to get a privately, uh, Education Funda, uh, Foundation, Tom, I can't, I think he might be here, uh, is on board. Uh, we, uh, the goal was to get $10,000 and we were talking about giving a hundred dollar, a hundred kids, a hundred dollars. And then Mr. Jen said, why don't we do the 25? We can do 400 kids for 10,000. And that's what we plan, uh, we're, so we were gonna get, uh, $10,000 privately was the goal. Uh, Tom came up with 2,500 immediately for us. Uh, Lions Club, I think is gonna give us a thousand. Uh, Mike Jocklin, uh, $5,000. He wants to be our, uh, top sponsor for that. So we're about 8,500 already of the 10,000. I think we can go beyond that if we get the rest of the board. I'm sure there's a lot of people that we can, uh, call up and ask them for some money. But maybe we can do this not just in September, but maybe October now too, if we do another one. So, uh, Tom said he would handle it. I don't know if you have any questions for him. Tom, you have it? Can I bring him up for one second? Because I, I don't want, I wanna get this right. If you, if you do wanna donate to this incentive plan, I think that's what we'll call it, uh, we, we would make the checks out to the Education Foundation?
Correct, uh, yes, the, uh.
And you're gonna buy, you're gonna buy the gift certificates and you're gonna run this, it's important to say not through your 501(c)(3), you're gonna run this separately, right?
No, no, this is part of the, uh.
It will be, okay.
This is part of what we do. So I'm just offering our services so the money can, can flow through the foundation. Uh, we have a, um, credit card system also that's standing ready. We can purchase the items for the school district. So I just wanted to offer the services of the foundation, uh, towards the program. And we'll also provide funding.
The checks would be made out to you and.
Correct.
You will, you will purchase the gift certificates.
Sure.
Handle it, so thank you. I'm glad I got you up here because I said something wrong, so you corrected me. But, uh, it's an incentive plan, just making you get vaccinated seems to work in, uh, so I just hope, uh, if you can get some more money, we do it again in October. Mr. Jen, you were gonna get, uh, some people together and decide when to do this and how and where to hang them out.
Right.
We don't have any, we don't have any of that put together yet. So with that, I'll just turn it over to you.
We'll work with, we'll work with Mr. Joe, uh, Tom, uh, and the Ed Foundation and what we want, you know, I, I wanna say thank you to you, to you all and the private, uh, organizations and give kids, um, a $25 gift card, uh, to come get vaccinated. So we'll work, uh, we'll get the word out and we'll work with their health department. We're gonna meet tomorrow and then try to do something very, very quickly and then get that word out on the street and, uh, the sites where they could come in and, uh, and get their vaccinations.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Just wanna make sure it's okay with everybody that we're, you know.
Question, um, uh, the kids right now, what age can they get that vaccination without parent permission if?
Thank you. Bill, I think you have to have parent permission, but it goes to, it's 11, 11 and higher, right?
They have to have parent permission, it's 12 and.
I'm sorry, 12 and higher, 11-year-olds, forget about it.
12 and up with parent permission.
Right.
Okay. And, and, and the other part of my question is, how are we doing in that area right now as a school district with the students getting vaccinated?
That, that goes to the health department. We'd have to get the numbers from the health department. We, we did, you know, strong outreach over the summer and, and going our, up to the first day of school, so we could get some information from them.
Well, the good news, as, as, um, Jack mentioned, the good news is that it's been FDA approved.
Correct.
As of, uh, yesterday.
Correct.
So that, that helps with the effort. And again, I wanna thank you also for coming up with that idea. I think it, it's, um, feasible. Thank you, uh, Tom, with the Education Foundation on there.
Let's get them vaccinated.
Absolutely.
And the last thing I have is Troy, did you pay the electric bill? What the heck is going on?
It's a disco.
I, I, wow.
We'll take care of it.
Yeah, Terrence all worked up now.
It's 45 degrees in here.
Thank you so much. It was, um, a long meeting, a lot to absorb, but, uh, encourage you, as, as several of you have mentioned, to set up times and get with our staff and really get a good understanding of what all's going on because there is a lot going on. So appreciate your attention and we don't have any other items, so we are adjourned.